On our priority list, I'll read that. Diana Shugers, Joe Taylor, Scotty Lewis, David McDonald, Jack Williams, Judy McCallum, Courtney Taylor, Manny Fong, Becky Cookston, Kathy Foster and her newborns were born nine weeks early. Gerald Huff, Rachel Kelly's mother, Tara Wilson's mother, and Tina White. Anyone else?
Shane Copper.
Shane Copper.
Family Zach Medley.
Family Zach Medley.
Zach Medley. Family Zach Medley, okay.
Mr. Shugers, I'm having some minor surgery Thursday.
Pardon?
I'm having some minor surgery Thursday.
Got it. Add more to that. You'll all bow your heads. Your Lord, thank you for another good day. And thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. I ask, dear Lord, that during these holidays coming up, that you'll watch over all the children, all the employees of the Board of Education, that they all might have a good Christmas, a happy new year, that they'll all be safe, healthy, and will be able to return back to school in January. Dear Lord, watch over all of us, protect us. In your name, amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consent items. I hope you all had the chance to look at all those. Do I have a motion on?
Mr. Shugers, I want to make a motion to approve the consent item A and B, and I want a full seat.
Full seat, alright. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Alright. All in the vote?
I have it.
Post? Alright, we pulled the Smith County High School request. And we have our ag teacher here for any questions that you would like to ask, or anybody else.
Well, question, I find this kind of unique to, which it seems like it would be a trip of a lifetime, but I'm kind of curious why we're going out of country to Ireland for this is what I'm curious about. I've sat on this board a long time. Sometimes it's hard to approve trips out of state, much less approve trips out of country. So I was going a little bit more in depth about this. I guess my question is this is, is there not other working farms in the United States a person could go to if you wanted to do something like this, and why are we going to Ireland for this?
Alright, so absolutely, a solid question. May I get your names? So this trip is through company EF Tours, which we currently use and have used probably for 10 more, 10 years or more. Mr. JR Smith currently has his trips with them right now. I believe a group of students are about to head to Greece over spring break. They went to France this past summer. So using this company is no different than any of the other trips that had been approved previously. And I spoke with Mr. Smith tonight, and he said that he had four trips approved for this. So yes, you're completely correct. There are tons of working farms, even within the county, that provide great opportunities for our students. There's fabulous ones within the state, and even just to look at surrounding states or somewhere like that. I didn't necessarily go questing for this. This opportunity was presented to me. And so I was like, wow, like, that's really cool. I didn't realize the difference in this trip versus trips that are currently going on. This is a STEM trip, and I know that's an acronym that we focus on a lot within education. And so this not only gives children the opportunity to go and see Ireland and experience some of the great places and landscapes and culture that it offers, but it's also going to give them a working experience. Now, again, they could go work on somebody's farm here, and that would be relatively the same, however, it does create the opportunity of a lifetime for them. I think that it's a quality investment, I guess, within our children, even like, I'm sitting here thinking about, yeah, like, what would I say about this? Like, I'm a high school teacher. I always have been. I've shifted my role several times within the years that I've been employed here. And I think that it's so different, the opportunities that we get to give our kids. So like, a elementary student or elementary teacher is probably looking at, hey, I want to teach this kid to read, and I want them to love school and this and that. But by the time they get to me, my job is to give them opportunities. They're supposed to be college and career ready when they leave my classroom. So how about the entire world ready? Because you take a kid right here from Smith County that never knew that they could go outside of the world. I've been on several trips. Trust me, especially as an ag teacher, I've taken kids all over the state, I've taken them out of the state, and I've been on a bus with a kid before that says, I've never left Smith County. And I think that's crazy in a lot of ways, because, I mean, I didn't actually travel or anything like that as a child, but I have left the county that I had grown up in. And so when I think, man, this is a high school student, and they've never been outside these towns and lines, that's crazy. So why not give them the opportunity to do something like that?
How many do you think are the interested in this?
There are 10 spots available for the trip right now. There's a parent info meeting that is going to be happening soon, and there are nine people registered for that. So essentially, like, spots can hopefully be filled for it. The trip won't be until May of 2026, so there's additional time for other spots to be filled, or even other spots to be open, if that's a need.
And that would be after the school service?
Yes, sir. Yes, so.
The life fee that you're making is made for the summer.
Yes, so what we're looking at now is like a travel window of like, May 28th, so we would be out of school. There would be time for athletic tryouts and everything like that, because usually we start hosting those, like, the first couple days outside of school and everything, so no one's going to be in jeopardy of missing any of those. And just due to like, flight bookings and hotel bookings and everything like that, they give like, a three-day travel window. So like, you could leave on the 28th, or you could leave like, three days afterwards. Yes, sir.
Have you ever used this organization before?
I personally have not. Our school system has Mr. JR Smith. He uses them.
He uses this?
Yes, sir. It's exactly the same thing.
So is this company EF STEM, is that the company that's trying, or is it, yeah, let's name the company?
Yes, EF, so Educational Tours.
Is this what they do to make their living and money, is promote tours and select people to go on, or are they directly tied with agriculture?
They are, they're not directly tied to agriculture. Their agricultural trips are actually a new component for them. So they're STEM trips. I think they have four agricultural trips right now. So there is Ireland, and the Dominican Republic, a new one in Belgium, and Italy is what they have going on right now. But they have like, tours and stuff everywhere, like, all over the world, and even a couple places within the US. Because his trip that is set for May of 2026 is to like, California, to do like Hollywood and all of those places. And I know several years ago, they went to New York.
Mr. McCallum, I don't think it's to answer your question somewhat, and you correctly, this trip, this company's not directly tied to agriculture, but they're directly tied to the education, like JR Smith had used for different things, you know. I asked her after we talked today, because she brought up some questions too. Tommy, I asked her to come, I thought, if you didn't have a chance to be here. She does an excellent job, as we talked, I couldn't figure out either why, it just wasn't offered, you know, Tennessee. I mean, you do, I came and spoke to her class the other day about artificial breed cattle, and we're setting up a field trip at her farm to do embryo, she's an embryologist. She's doing some great things. She's a, but, but I think you might have answered that, but, but I think it's in there, but where's the, who's paying, individual child paying?
Yeah, so the cost is kind of, it falls on the individual child. However, the company offers like, a fundraising program. And so it sets up a lot like a GoFundMe, essentially, so like, the child is given a link to it, and they can push it out themselves and everything, but they don't take any fees or tax deductions from it like GoFundMe does. I know GoFundMe's did that, but they do that. So the child gets 100% of any money that's donated to them. So it's a great opportunity for a child to be like, hey, you know, don't give anything for my birthday, just donate some money for my trip or anything. I also spoke with Mr. Apple, because when I presented this idea to him, he's like, you know, are you going to give these kids an opportunity to fundraise? And I said, yes, I would like to. So just within our, as a bank organization, we do several fundraisers that help pick our charter afloat and help with our travel to like, state conventions, national conventions, and all of that stuff. And so what I was looking at was maybe trying to find a different fundraiser, like, outside of some of the things that we currently do, because we do like a mom sale, and we have our greenhouse sale. So maybe something outside of that, or even the kids that are attending this trip and that are willing to participate in the fundraisers we currently have, like, whatever money that they generate from that, I'm going to take their money and put it on their trail. So it won't go to our charter account, it will go to help them make this opportunity available to them.
Will it be, I guess, if you was to come up with more than 10 kids, would it be, how we prioritize it, like, seniors, would they get the first opportunity, or juniors, older kids?
Yes, so older kids could have the first opportunity, like, any of them have access to. A lot of times, conversations I've had with students currently right now, they're kind of like, I'm out of here, like, what are you talking about? But I'm trying to know, some of them there were, some that had already graduated, that had went to France and stuff last year, but no, I mean, it's pretty open, and honestly, I can fill as many seats as that can be on a bus over there in Ireland, for the most part. So I mean, you're talking a pretty good amount of kids would have the opportunity to go.
I was just thinking, if it was a lot of seniors, they're done graduating by that date anyway.
Yes, they are, but they still have the opportunity to attend.
Yeah, I mean, they could go.
So I would not expect you to do it like that. I was like, college will be done by then, you'll be out for the summer, like, go on a trip.
So I'm sure that they would have to have a visa, correct, and be under 18?
They have to have a passport, yes.
Under 18.
Like, everybody will have to have one. So, and the fee that is associated with the trip, that's like, all inclusive, so that's their round trip, airfare, that's all their hotels, that's their transportation anywhere we're going, that's their breakfast every day, their dinner every day. The only additional cost that the students have to pay for is like, lunch, snacks, souvenirs, and then like, obtaining their passport before we leave. That's something that's not included in the cost, so they would have to do that themselves.
Have you talked to any other schools that have made this type trip?
I have not talked to other schools that have specifically done this tour. I do believe there are some within the state of Tennessee that have. And speaking with the lady that is like, helping to organize the trip and everything with me, she has made reference that other schools have, but she's not specifically decided which ones.
It'd be nice to know if everything went well, because of their trip. And what happens if fundraisers don't raise the funds?
Then, I mean, it becomes a cost for the parents, like, if they're, like, if you're willing to send your kid, then I mean, that's a situation, I guess, that you get into. And they split it up to be like, monthly payments, everything like that for the students, and they try to make it as feasible and as attainable as possible for them.
So how soon, you know, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking of liability, I'm thinking of, it's just a big, that's a big, that's just a lot for me to say, hey, I want a freshman from Smith County to be able to go to Ireland with someone, even as a chef, and I'm just asking, how soon are you trying to get this, the ball rolling? As soon as night, you want the ball rolling, but if it comes down, you had to make a better, let's just say, with this undecided, you said, I gotta know something about the follow-up this year. I mean, have you decided when's the latest, latest you can start getting this prepared if, if we're undecided?
I mean, I guess I could pick it up and drop at any time, but the thing is, if I had changed dates with them, it changes costs and everything like that, so it kind of locks in for right now where it holds. And I can totally understand the concern, like, I mean, who's just, there's a kid on the other side of the world with somebody else, but people have done it for years now. Like, there's a group of kids that went to France this summer. So how is that different?
Can I, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you, there's a pretty, pretty broad stretch here before it would actually take place, right? So, of course, everybody knows, I'm going to have something to say about safety. Who, are you monitoring like, world events and things like that, you know? I mean, because, you know, dynamics around the world are changing all the time, and, you know, something could be happening in that arena, or a country that you'd be traveling through to right there, that could cause a problem. Who's monitoring, are you monitoring those things?
Absolutely. So I would monitor those things, you know, most definitely, like, more so than I just kind of do, I guess, currently. The EF company, one of the best things about working with them is they are like, really big on safety. So we have a tour director that's with us 24/7, and also, any place in the world that they have like, a tourist site or a destination, they have people that live there, weren't there, they're complete residents of that area, they use locals as like, their tour directors and stuff like that. And then they work with people locally in the area, so if something is going on, they make different plans. So like, one of the things that was expressed to me, so we had a group, like, you know, in France, actually several schools had groups in France this last year, and there was an issue with like, some riots and some protests and stuff that were going on, and so she said, hey, like, we worked with our tour directors, we contacted our locals and everything like that in the area, and they're like, hey, you know, this is only happening on these two streets, so like, as long as you avoid these two streets, like, you will never encounter anything like this. And so that's exactly what they did, they called the tour directors, and they said, hey, you know, just don't be on this side, this and that. And so she said, the tour went off the same as always, and like, the students and the participants on the tour had no idea that there was actually anything different or anything going on.
So let me ask you this, like, as it got down closer to the wire, before you go, you know, like, just, and I'm just speaking off the cuff here, if I were to support this, would you be willing to contact the United States agency, or travel around and just ask what the tone is, not the locals? Because sometimes the locals will tell you everything in the world, you know, I mean, I want a, I want a little bit more concrete. Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely. Yes, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Any more questions? Anybody?
I think, you know, it comes down to if the parents are going to let their kids go, if they want to let their kid go and trip overseas, not a lot of kids going to get to go on. I understand the, I understand the problems, but I don't think we ought to be telling them they can't.
Can I?
That's just my opinion.
It's a once in a lifetime.
That's right, that's just my opinion.
Yes.
I don't have a question, I just, I felt compelled to make a comment, and Tommy, I'll try to be short. You know, I agree with you, Mr. Enick, if a parent is fine with that, but, you know, sitting here listening to your plea, or you present your case, if you're, pardon me, Madam Attorney, you presenting your case, it put me in mind of my youngest daughter. I think she was born with a bag in her hand, ready to go anytime. She traveled all over the place, and it's horrified me every time that she's done so. But something, an observation I have made in that is that she has returned more well-rounded. Her capabilities or her feeling of being more capable has been stronger, you know? So I have noticed that benefit in my own child. I call her a child, she probably, she probably will appreciate that, but, but, you know, and of course, we, I experienced that for my work. They travel all around the world on these trips, and my daughter participated in that in Cumberland as well. And I was on the phone with the Secret Service and everybody in the world, you know, had a airplane and everything else ready to go, but it just, it bothered me because it was my child, but that was being overprotective, I think, in retrospect, and I think I have to agree with Mr. Enick, if a parent is, is willing to go along with this. I see it, I see it personally as expanding the horizon of a young person, their thought process, and being able to integrate their thought process, and what they do things with, what they might bring home from the place. So I don't view it as a bad thing, yes, there'd be concerns, obviously, with anything you do, but I kind of agree with Mr. Enick on this, if a parent is fine with it, I don't know why the board should stand in the way of that. That's just my feeling.
Parents are welcome to attend with their child too, so if that's something that they would like to do. Of course, they travel, and that's an expense to them too, so, and I know that that starts to get into like, hey, am I willing to pay for two spots on this trip? But there are lots of times, like, that parents have gone on trips with their students. We've had other faculty members say, hey, like, I just think that's a great opportunity, and they, you know, pay for a spot, and they go as well. And kind of that, my daughter went to Peru, she's in college at Vass State and everything like that, she came home one day, and she was like, there's this, this opportunity, like, we can go travel, like, study abroad in like, Peru, and I was like, girl, you are the most dependent, and you are not leaving this house, like, and she did it. And it was like, so cool to watch her spread her wings and like, trip of a lifetime, like, quite honestly, it really is, because she grew a lot from that experience. And I know it's probably a little bit different, saying, hey, this college kid is going to go off and do this versus, you know, a freshman or a sophomore or somebody like that in high school, but if we show them right now that these opportunities and stuff are available to them, then really the sky's the limit, like, they might go off and do something that was never really in their thought process, but they'll change the world.
But it's based on a parent's approval and all of that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they, they can't do anything without their parent.
I'm just saying, the parent's going to be involved with you and all of that.
To sign it up, even a kid of 18 and everything like that, they have to have like, parent's signature and everything for it.
Yeah, questions? Do you think you'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion, per.
Second.
Got a second. Your roll call. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. McCallum?
No.
Mr. Taylor, oh, excuse me, he's out. Mr. Manning?
I'm going to stay.
I'll stay, okay. Mr. McDonald?
I'm going to stay also.
Myself, yes. We've got one, two, three.
I said, you still taking five?
You have five to pass.
Sure.
Takes five votes to pass. You got three, yes. You got two of stain, so it's, and one, no, and one is, is not here.
Yes, they did pass.
Motion, vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All of those are tied together, all three of the Smith County High.
No, no, they were not tied together.
Yeah, it is.
Consent items were, consent items.
I'm sorry, I meant the Smith County High.
Smith County High is tied together.
Smith County High.
So that wasn't the only thing, or?
So we'll have to back up and see if we're going to let them go? Is that my correct?
Going up to what?
We're going to back up, because these others, we've got to vote on them.
There were multiple trips and consent items.
Now, on that motion, we vote on the consent item, C, separate.
Each trip separate.
And that is all three trips. That is the, that consent item is all three trips.
Yeah, it's all three, I didn't realize that.
So now, we've got to back up and discuss, if you want to discuss the cheerleaders going to Orlando in Florida, and then you've got Hosa Club going to Chattanooga. Now, we'll have to vote on those.
Well, we're going to have to turn around, we're going to have to turn around and vote on all three of these again.
You will.
Because we voted down, C was voted down, all three of them. So I'll make a motion, and go back into C and vote on each one of them individually again.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Favorite? All in favor? I oppose. Okay, we'll start with the first one. The Smith County High School request to go to Universal Orlando Resort in Florida.
So we don't have nobody, not being that way, but nobody here to talk about that?
No, sir.
Okay, I seen, I seen somebody here from the school system, I didn't know if that's true.
I'll make the motion, we will, for that. True. A second.
Motion, second. Second. Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The next one is the Hosa, Smith County High School, Hosa Club request for a state leadership convention in Chattanooga. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hosa, what's, what's that, Hosa?
It is, FHA, it would be something to do, I don't know what you exactly.
Be students involved, be students involved.
Oh, yeah, it's all of us, yes.
Okay.
It's health related, like health occupation.
And what's, wasn't much of a, so how, okay, I got it.
Motion, second, any more discussion? If not, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Does that mean we rebump that a little bit?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion.
I guess we'll, yep. Motion to, Mr. McCallum going to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, per.
I'll second it.
You're seconding, okay. Any more discussion?
Is this for the Ireland trip?
Yes, sir.
I think it's just weird, we're determining where, that we're saying the kids can go to, I know it's overseas, but we're saying they can go to Orlando or Chattanooga with the parents' approval, but if the parents approve, they can go to Ireland, we're saying they can't.
Well, guys, this is a working trip. As you read the package, these kids are going to be working on this farm. What happens when these kids get hurt working on this farm?
However, the parents are agreeing to it, and they're involved in it.
Yes.
I just like more information. People took a trip to France with a group, and the guy had a heart attack, and just left him in France and came back. I mean, I don't know what's going on, and as you say, some way that gets hurt.
Yeah, I do agree that when the time, it's a year and a half away, that if the time gets closer and there's something going on in the world, you know, we need to back up and put, maybe.
Well, I mean, it changes every day, so.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we, couldn't we just table this and let her come back with some answers that, that you need? Couldn't we just table this? Would you withdraw your motion in your second and table it?
I don't have specific questions. If you'll get them to me, so she has an opportunity to answer those.
To get answers for it. Would everybody be good with that?
Yes.
You know.
Well, I think you're persuading that you're trying to change something that's, I'm not all right with it.
Well, I mean, we've had some that's wanting to get more information, and Mr. McDonald said he'd like to have a little more information, and I think Tommy would like to have a little more detail to it.
I think they'd be students that sign up to go on the moon if we let them.
But now, if we've done past, if I'm not, we're going, done past for them to go to, where is?
JR.
JR going.
France, to France.
When did we pass that?
Last summer, they went last summer.
They went last summer, so we passed that, they went last summer to France.
I don't remember that.
I don't either.
I don't remember that.
Well, he went. As she said, this is a great opportunity for some of these children, and a lot of y'all don't, well, I didn't realize it. There's a lot of children that have never been out of the state of Tennessee. They think going to the Smoky Mountains is like going to New York, or Texas, or California. And a lot of us have been fortunate to go different parts of the country, or different parts of the world, far as that goes. A lot of us have been fortunate, and there's just a lot of children that are not fortunate enough, they're not financially able to do it. And if it's all right with everybody, I think let's, let's table this and get some more information. Yes, or Mr. McCallum?
I'll make a motion that we put this on the back burner, submit questions, and get those answers, and then.
For the next meeting.
She says she needed, yes, sir. Pardon? She says she needed the price to change, she delayed it, you know? So we need to do as soon as we can.
Yeah, the next meeting, we need to have it by the next meeting.
I'll make a, I will withdraw my motion.
So what's the, what's?
I'll withdraw my second.
So what's the difference in somebody wanting to take a bunch of kids on a honorable cruise? And I, I'm.
There's not, but the boards could vote down what they want, and that's a parent to some degree.
What's that?
You know, the board, they can come in and the board has a right to refuse on a case by case. And also parental rights would be involved. I mean, no offense, I don't agree with everything every parent, unless their child do mine, though, if you, but that's my, you know.
But so, parents are involved in this one. They'll probably sign one form after another, after another, to give them permission to go if they don't go themselves.
It's ultimately their decision.
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, we've got a motion and we got a, and we got a second. Okay, any more discussion?
Can, if the board individually wants to ask questions, can you turn those in to me or Tracy once over that I can give her, it may be such she can't answer, like a number or working on the farm or not working on the farm, yeah, if it's something you want.
It says they're gonna work on the farm, this is a working trip.
Yeah, I, but I think, he said, turn it down, I could answer that, but next if he wanted to.
Mr. McDonald has some questions and if he can get those together, well, we can get them answered for you and, uh, and, uh, for Mr. Manning here, so.
I don't think that's unfair, if any board members got questions, there's nothing unfair about asking them.
Right. So we have a motion, second, any more discussion? Not all in favor? I oppose.
I oppose.
I oppose, I wanna oppose. Okay. Okay, also, while I'm, this moment, we just got a text that, uh, Mr. Taylor got out of his surgery, went well, and, uh, said that laying his wife would probably, what, the next, uh, two hours would get to go in and see. And everything, they said everything went well. All right, let's go one further. Uh, superintendent's actions, I hope you looked at all those, anybody want to pull any of those to discuss or anything? If not, we'll go on to new business. Uh, this is a contract between Vanderbilt and Smith County Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, discussion?
What, what are they doing? What, what are we paying them for?
Well, we use services that we obviously can't provide, you know, we wouldn't have a staff for one or two individually, but we got Mr. Swan, who will go more in depth here, so you know, he's came here and that, but we're not actually using the service, it's just in case we have an individ- one individual that may need it and if it did look, can reach and get them versus having to go through a two, three month process, but Eric could, I explain that. Eric, Eric explained exactly this, this service that we're, we do a lot of contract with Vanderbilt.
We have an existing contract with this group already and they provide the support of a teacher for hearing impaired. Now, what they requested for us is for a teacher or student, they would like to reach out and consult with their audiologist to better support that student. So they felt like if we could approve the contract, then they would not have to go around about, like, they could just directly talk to their audiologist. Not a services we anticipate using very often, but a support need for a child when it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Tasson?
Yes.
Mr. Steeney?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bid approval for fuel, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. McDonald? Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Tasson? Uh, discussion? If not this money, uh, roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Tasson?
Yes.
Mr. Steeney?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next item is committee appointments for ethics building, safety, sick leave banks. Now, in that, which involves appointing, uh, really that we need somebody for ethics and somebody for safety, I think that's what we discussed. Uh, and, uh, I guess it's left up to me to make these appointments, uh, which with ethics, uh, I'd like to have, uh, which, which Smith needs to be on all those committees.
Mr. Shogars?
Yes.
I don't, I don't re- recollect really a business before, Tommy, I mean.
You're on the committee now.
You're on one now.
So this is just a?
We have to re.
Renew.
Renew it, okay.
Well, we have, we have all changed.
I got you. I got you.
We, I don't think they've made, I don't think you had a need to meet, but, you know, if you have an institute at school, you really do have for sure a safety and also you really need a ethics if you don't have anything else, those things.
Well, Marty, since you spoke up, I'll put you on ethics.
Okay.
About you, Mr. Lewis? You on ethics?
Certainly, yes.
Uh, the only other one really we need a, uh, a board for would be safety. Uh, again, I'd like to have Richard Smith on it and Mr. Lewis, and I'm open up for anybody else that would wanna jump on that.
I do that.
Mr. McDonald, okay?
Know what to do, why I'm doing.
On safety, all right? Uh, do I have a motion to approve these people?
Yes.
Motion approved. Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, roll call, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Tasson?
Yes.
Mr. Steeney?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Excuse me, he's out. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, next thing on the agenda will be the discussion of school safety and we have Mr. Mike Dunn here with us tonight and he would like to address the board and, uh, you gave Mr. Dunn permission to be here, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Dunn.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate you giving me time tonight, I know everybody's time's precious, especially this time of year, so, uh, Merry Christmas to y'all ahead of time. I was trying to get in to speak with you all many, after I spoke to the county commission on, uh, congratulations to y'all for how you helped out the teachers and all the employees of the school district, uh, earlier than the year, and, uh, I know a lot of people appreciate that, so thank you. I wanted to touch base with you all again revolving, uh, around school safety and security. I'm glad the issue was talked out tonight with the new committee. Uh, recap, I've been in law enforcement and government service over thirty years, local, state, and federal level, as well as other government service, including the district attorney's office and a government board. And, uh, I was involved in the, in Tennessee's first reactionary, uh, services to an active situation in schools back in the nineties after the Columbine incident. Uh, we started reevaluating how to react to that type of situation. Before that time, if an incident happened in a school, the old playbook was to make a perimeter, call SWAT, and have them come out and formulate a plan, then they would make entry. Well, people are getting shot right and left while all that's happening, so that wasn't working anymore. People weren't coming in to take hostages anymore, they were coming in to kill, soft targets. So in an active killer situation, we used to call them active shooter situation, but all over the world they're using everything else as well. So and even it's made into this country with machetes and daggers and whatever, pipe bombs, so it's progressed to active killer situation. Because of that, we reevaluated, everybody on the department got the same training, first four officers on site, make entry, take out the subjects that are causing the issue, and save as many people as possible to second save lives. So with that, building on that, I started training unofficially, officially, with Roger Lewis, uh, years ago, here with, uh, a couple, uh, schools, and we went through scenario drills late at night, because if, I hesitate to say this publicly, we're recording, but a good ninety percent plus of the active killer situations involve students or former students being the aggressor. And they know the plan, they know the drills, so they know what to do to affect the most kills possible. So I requested and suggested reevaluating some of those things and we ran through some active scenarios and made teachers think, made principals think. I'd recommend the same again, but on a side note, because of that and developed into that, we just happened to own this one day when I was working undercover, we were able to uncover the first sleeper sale in the state of Tennessee shortly after nine eleven. And it was a sleeper sale in Nashville, over on Forty-S sixth Avenue, that was funneling and raising money through narcotics to fund other sleeper sales across the state to machine gun elementary schools when they got the green light. That was their MO, but we stopped it. We just happened upon it and that was an act of God, I believe that. So because of that, we went on further. I got with a senator and we started to develop a, a concept of direct information to where if there could be a device, and the device was worn by a teacher or whoever in the school district wanted to wear one, if there was an incident involved and if an alert was pushed, it's an instant video and audio live feed between that wearer and nine one one communication and whoever else you want the guest link to go to, maybe the six officers that patrol the area, maybe sheriff hopper, maybe the chief of police, maybe whoever, EMS, chief, uh, height, the fire department, whoever, uh, as many guest links as you want. They get a live feed on their phone, on their laptop, on their security monitors in the office, uh, director's schools, his office, big security monitor on the wall, it'd be a live feed of what's going on in real time. So the first responders, as they're responding, they know what they're responding to, they know where to go exactly because of the GPS inside the device, and on the way, they know what plan to formulate. And this is what we call the fog of war in law enforcement has been lifted, because in the where to go, suspect description, weapon description, casualties, uh, exactly as it's revolving, and the device I helped to manufacture and create, not only do first responders get a live feed, but everyone else that's wearing the device at the school, they look on the back and they get a live feed also. So if a teacher on this end of the school is alerted by a teacher on that end of the school, oh my goodness, they're shooting in the gym, I had no idea. We're taking evasive action, whatever the plan is, whatever's decided ahead of time. If you study the Columbine High School shooting footage, the kids that survived were the ones that got out, 'cause they had time to react in a beneficial way to them. The ones that huddled and stayed in place, they got killed. And, uh, all the protective duties I've held with VIPs, protective duties with presidents and all the delegation, we separate our protectee from the threat and works every time if you separate them from the threat. So our children's lives are worth no less. But if the first responders know exactly what's going on, where to go in real time, and it always evolves, 'cause if somebody calls the police and says, I've got this, that this is going on, and if it's a hectic situation, the information's always partial, sometimes it's incorrect, sometimes a wrong suspect description gets out, and then all kinds of stuff gets into chaos, 'cause the wrong people are getting chased and the good, the right people are getting away, it's, it's a mess. But this helps put everybody on the same link at the same time for the right purpose, including medical situations or simple distress in the classroom, what if the teacher's involved in a fight? What if she's asked to break up a fight between two students? Whatever it is, that button's hit and it's a live feed straight to the SRO, straight to the principal, straight to the school nurse, and they can see in real time what's going on. Not only that, medical situation, child has a collapse in the classroom or on the track or on a school bus or at a convention or in, uh, on a trip in Florida or in Chattanooga, these devices do not go out of range. They're three, four, and five G network with a contract with First Net through law enforcement and they're backed up by Starlink, so they never go out of range. We've had it tested worldwide already, from Asia to here, uh, all over the country, different states to here. So if you're out on the track, if you're anywhere, this device has two-way communication without an emergency alert, teachers can talk to teachers all day long, principals can talk to whatever teachers they want, all of them at the same time, or ten of them, or the coaching staff, or these three, or that one, or teacher to teacher, whatever, and it's all encrypted. The eight hundred megahertz radios we have nowadays, they are not encrypted, they might be private channels, but if you've got a matching radio, like happened and defeated several times already, people up the street keep messing around with the daily school schedule and it causes chaos and HIPAA violations. Little Johnny's coming back from the nurse's office, he's gotta go home, he's got the flu, go ahead and pack his stuff. That just went out on republic radio waves and that's a fifty thousand dollar fine per occurrence if reported. So with these devices, push-button talk communication like the old next tell, plus it's got text communication, teachers don't have to carry a cell phone anymore, they can text each other at school, text the principal back and forth, it replaces intercom if you want it to, teachers can wear an earbud so it doesn't disturb the class. Several possibilities, plus we've added a couple things. I wanna pass these out to y'all and, uh, yes, sir? I'm a visual person as well, so, uh, it'll help you picture what's going on. We've added a couple alerts, decibel alerts, to where? Let's say a, uh, a wearer happens to be the first casualty, we added gunshot detection as a decibel alert. So if the device hears gunshots, it's an instant live feed to nine one one, just in case the teacher that's wearing it is the first casualty and the kids don't know what to do. So, uh, I've done a comparison here, some people are using a cell phone nap and some people have gone with the panic button card, and, uh, this compares the device we've designed to those other two functions. And in the back of the packet, I wrote a descriptive letter that kinda goes in detail about things, but what I'm asking of you all, there are grants that will pay for these things. We drew up legislation and took it before the Tennessee General Assembly last session, there was not one single vote in opposition. The House, the Senate, the governor's office, everybody in favor unanimously. So they decided just administrated, we improve it, approve it for the safety grant for the school districts to cover these devices. And at the same time, that safety grant was used up to pay for SROs statewide because of the post covenant school shoot, shooting atmosphere. So we expect that fund to come up again in this next session, it probably won't reach the level it did last time at forty million, but it will, it will have some put into it, but there's also different grants out there, as you all know, the COGS grants at the federal level, and there's even a nonprofit one right now for churches that's come out at the federal level for these devices. So, uh, this is the best technology on the market right now for protecting our children. There's nothing better out there that can offer a real-time information piling between the incident and the first responders, whether they be medical, police, or fire. And our children's lives are worth it, the teachers' lives are worth it, and for once, the first responders' lives will be protected because they're not going into an ambush anymore, because everybody's on the same page at the same time. But this device can be used daily for daily encrypted communication at school, teachers won't have to use their cell phones, which we know is a huge liability for personal information, kids' information, texting stuff, taking pictures, taking them home, getting them on social media. These devices have no internet search capability and the product on there would be owned by the school district. So if an incident is triggered and recorded, that material stays on the device and could be downloaded by an administrator at that school and it's property of the school district, nowhere else. No one else is looking in like Big Brother does with our phones. And if you don't believe that, mention Gatlinburg and you'll see all the ads for Gatlinburg pop up on your phone, everybody's seen it, we know. But with these devices, it's, it's the best friend for the teacher, for the wearer, and for the responder at the same time to protect everybody's lives. It's an awesome thing, it's a no-brainer, and especially if you get the grants to pay for, my goodness, it's awesome. We've been working with Williamson County a lot, they loved it and wanted a souped-up different device, so we designed something special just for them. And, uh, they're all for it, we're supposed to have one more meeting with them in January, but my goodness, I would love it if Smith County was the, the first school district to have it, we're already in churches, uh, Williamson churches in Williamson County are in love with it and they're already using it. Our products already been tested by security companies, law, former and current law enforcement officers working with security details, they love them, and that's their world. I understand that because it's my world. So I would appreciate it, I will ask you this, for the benefit of our kids, our teachers, you all, and our SROs, citizens of Smith County, give us a chance to prove it to you. Let me set up a meeting with you all to demonstrate what we have. Let me set up a meeting with you all to demonstrate what we have, and see what you all think. Any questions, we can answer them, you can see how it works, what it does, all the good stuff. And just in case, we can compare devices, things like that, it'd be wonderful to display it for y'all, for the benefit of the kids, and there's nothing out there better, not at all. We've also got people right now that are already negotiating overseas and with the new Trump administration for this, and they're interested, very interested. So, any questions for y'all, from y'all tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
You said this would be fully funded, and you'd use your safety grant money to pay for this?
That's what the Tennessee Legislature and the governor's office administratively approved.
We'd use our safety money for other stuff too.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if the board realizes, new board members probably don't realize this, we're under the COPS grant now, we're doing a three-year, we have the push-button ladders that wires on their necks now, and I think it's a three-year deal, do we have a three-year grant?
Maybe four.
Four-year grant. So, this is the first year we started that, and we've got that, and I have a few employees that had a few concerns about the small ladders being a little heavy around the neck. And now you're wanting to put something like a cellphone, which I seen your device last time that you had, that was gonna put around the neck.
Let me ask you that. Yes, sir. Our device weighs four ounces, which is one-third the weight of a smartphone, and it doesn't have to be worn on a ladder, it can be clipped on a panel, clipped on a belt, kept in your pocket, wherever you want it kept. And it can be kept on a charger just like your eight-hundred-megahertz radio, which is much heavier than the cellphone, anybody's cellphone. It's what they carry now, that eight-hundred-megahertz radio that goes out of range.
Every employee now hopes, radio, now have a ladder, which we're under the COPS grant for that, we're gonna establish that issue. Said no school district, state, Tennessee isn't implementing this yet?
Not yet. It's new technology, and it was approved for the safety grant right after the safety grant emptied.
If you used your safety back money every year for this, or is there a one-time fee, or is there a monthly fee for the device you have to wire?
There would be a maintenance and upgrade fee, but it's very minimal, and the purchase of the device is devices of y'all's. And we would offer a sell-back feature three years later if you want to bring up with a better device. And we could buy them back from you all, and we can always sell them to a security company or whoever they wanted.
So, what if, are you there?
No, my main concern is, you said it's got video capability when you just press a button?
Yes, sir.
Not saying that every employee is the perfect employee, those who always might get the ladder down. I'm kind of concerned about that, what if you was in a place where you didn't need to be recorded, and you hit the button and decided you wanted to record something? And I know it will stay on our web streaming thing, but everybody in the room can see it, so I'm a little concerned about that also.
Well, there's different alerts on that device, and if you want to push the ultimate SOS, it's a two-button verification alert, so you're not going to accidentally push it, you have to intentionally.
Which you could, intentionally could.
I'm sorry?
You could intentionally push it.
A favor, if we're gonna employ intentionally doing that, then we need to be addressing it.
I know, and we would. I'm saying it could happen.
They could do it along with what they already have. And we're offering a one-stop shop for the best in communication to save lives, that's it. And anything can be misused, anyway. And as far as the push-button cards that are already in existence, that's a blind alert.
No.
And it has to be pressed eight times to send a ding alert to nine-one-one, and they have no idea what's going on. Is somebody's leg broke, or is it a guy with a gun? We don't know. The next step is, has to be a phone call. And if something's under distress, and if nobody answers the phone, they still don't know what's going on. And if things shift around, they don't know where it's at, because things evolve and move. But with this, instant live feed, and they stay in touch, two-way communication the entire time. I would want that for my children, for my family, even for me.
I'm just kind of curious why other school commissioners haven't jumped on this already?
Money, money is the thing. It was approved by safety grant, for the safety grant, but that's just one method. And again, especially with the little push-button card, well, we've just spent a bunch of money on these candles, we don't need electricity. We've got the candles, we want to get used to the candles. So, you know, if something, and that's why I tried to describe a comparison between the popular cellphone app or the push-button card, law enforcement everywhere, they're wanting ours. And in fact, you know you've got something good when Motorola copies your information and prints my words, word for word, on their website. So, that's pretty good. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I just got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Wish you would call me, sir, we've known each other too long.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Under our current circumstances, does it have that live feed video capability?
It's the card?
Yes.
No.
Okay, all right, so, listen, I'm gonna make a couple of comments. I mean, obviously, clearly, I'm not gonna, I mean, he and I have been friends for years, but I'm not affiliated with them, but obviously, we've done the same line of work, and I'm older than he is, but for a long time. I don't care, and I'm not trying to sell this product, what I am, I'm about to make a comment, and I'm gonna make a motion, but I don't care what product that we're using, but y'all know I did this for thirty-five years, I'm doing it now for the university. I'm chairman of the safe committee at the university, I'm on the safe committee. Some of the most disconcerting, unmanageable, it's like chewing gum and hair, is an attack like this on a school system, particularly when the ones responding cannot see what's happening. One of the most gut-wrenching things in the world is knowing that they're telling you that there's something in this building, but you can't see what's in there, and you don't know where it is. And we just experienced that with Covenant.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not trying to get off on that because the news is still talking about it, but fourteen minutes, is that right? Because the gunshots are going off, and the officers are responding, and they did a stellar job, I'm not knocking that, but my role causes, causes me to reconstruct, and just like yours, they're going up the staircase, one's grabbing one, now I think it's over here, it's over there. Listen, gentlemen, you've got to think about this in a different term. The active shooter, so to speak, is the threat, but it's not the only threat. Time, every second that clicks by is one more round that's fired off, so how do you eliminate that? I mean, I know what we do where I work, but, and it's not this program or whatever, but everybody that's responding can see everything in real time, just like we can, every move that's made, every time it shifts, and it will shift, and they will move, and they move all through these buildings. The fastest way that I know to stop this once it begins, because none of us have the ability, I mean, God almighty does, but we don't, to say that tomorrow, there's not going to be another one of these in the world, there will be, absolutely, somewhere.
One yesterday.
So, what can we do to, if it occurs, what can we do to reduce the impact of that? Well, time, time is how we reduce the impact of that, it's a proven thing, I've stated it time and again, and we deploy in that way now. So, I would like, with the chairman's permission, I don't think that it's too much to ask, we've got several new board members that probably have questions. I would like like a motion to let him come and do a presentation and show what this device will do in comparison to what we have now, and then let the board look and ask questions and see what's happening with it, because, you know, without sitting in front of you and the realization of what difference it makes, it truly does. Our last active shooter, again, I'm using that language, which I realize has changed, but I'm trying not to be so aggressive sounding with it. Drill that we ran after we started implementing these type of things, the subject target subject that we utilized in that was in hands in three minutes and twenty-two seconds. Now, listen, and why? Because all of us could see what was happening at the same time, as it moved, we moved. You know, I mean, how many wrecks could you avoid on the interstate if you could see what was happening in real time? So, I really think that it's worth, you know, letting him come show y'all this and let everybody kind of look at it. Mr. Chairman, if you permit me, I'm gonna make a motion, do that, if I don't get a second, I understand, but first responders, you know, are the ones that are coming to our children, our teachers and things in these buildings would have, need the ability to be able to see these things, in my opinion, to be able to react to it and move away, you know. The old homeland security training is, you know, the three thing rule, you know, run, hide, or fight, whatever. Run is what lives the majority of the time, but if you don't know it's there, you don't know to run. So, I'm making a motion that he be allowed to come and give us a presentation so that all of y'all can see what I haven't seen this technology, I think you were here once before and showed us a little something, but this is different from that, a little bit more improved, I believe, just reading this. I'm gonna make the motion, he be allowed to come for the board and just give us a presentation, and let y'all all see what you think and all that stuff. So, making that form of motion, if I don't get a second, then I don't, but I think it's worth our time. If it benefits one child's life or employee's life, I think it's worth our time to look at it.
Okay, we got a motion, do I have a second?
I say instead of doing the presentation or whatever in here, could we go to a school and they have two or three cameras, so one would be on one end, one on another end, just to make sure the distance and everything's there?
And you can actually communicate.
Be ready.
I mean, you could use a facility right here. Let me.
Guys, I don't have a problem sending this technology. The problem I have here, guys, a year and a half ago, we set right here and set the Tennessee COPS grant to put the ladders in, and we signed a four-year deal together. So, now, if we ended up going this way, and I think your technology is good, I'm not talking technology, you're gonna have two systems in this thing. You're under contract for three more years with the ladders.
We might be, but that doesn't mean they have to have it around their neck every day.
No, but I mean, we're not diligent with the money, we're just gonna throw that one your way?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying we're not being, my opinion, based on my experiences, we're not being diligent in our efforts to provide what is the most technologically advanced advantage to our students, employees, and the first responders coming in, because these things change. I know we sit right here and did that.
Oh, yeah, this device has changed from the last one.
It has, Tommy, and it, but the reason it changes so much is that everybody's desire to try to achieve that level where everybody involved is on the same page and has moved so quickly, and I just think it's worth their time. Now, if you'd like to have a demonstration or something, bring them and go middle school over here, we can sit in here in real time, watch, see what happens. I mean, but I just think so, anyway, go ahead.
I'd like to see a demonstration of what we have now, so we can compare apples to apples.
Bring them both.
If we get into a school system, maybe we can get that done too.
I think you gotta look at two things, you're definitely under contract to finish out where we're at, okay? This may, and I don't want any way to discredit what we got, because it's awesome. I don't want anybody to fool you, we're getting other school systems across the state, the country's coming to look at what we got. I'm not saying what you got ain't a jet airplane compared to it, I understand, I don't like it discredited because it's great, okay? And I think it'd be great for y'all to see how it works, and then I think that's fine, listen, but, and if they're gonna fund this, I don't care to have four systems, but if the funding's there, if they're gonna pay for it, I'm, you know, why not? But I don't think you can afford to get two systems, I highly advise you against that, pay for two. But if it's free, I'm in. But yes, we can arrange whatever y'all want, and then I would do them on a separate day, so you could really ask questions and understand. I would advise y'all to talk to some of the teachers, students, you know, and then Mr. Duncan present his then.
So, do I have a second?
Not yet.
Still waiting for a second.
I don't think it matters.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second to have a demonstration, just to see what it does, make sure it works.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, we just need to get it with Mike and set up, I'll see them after Christmas.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I wish you would.
No, but I, y'all wanna do it, I know y'all, all y'all here work a job, you wanna do it on a board meeting night, or do you wanna do it? Y'all wanna give me some time?
Well, this, is it possible to do it, is that retreat in February?
I was gonna say, you could do one of them.
Do one of them then?
Yeah. If Tammy, if we could talk to her and see how much time she's gonna allot, Mike could do them both, you know, that they.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Say that for me.
You're welcome.
Let you start. Put it together. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all, Merry Christmas. Thank you all. If you can, please join us seven o'clock in the morning for the Republican Party Christmas Social Record Chamber.
The annual policy review for December, y'all all have, change political policies. If so, do we need to go into sedative session?
No, not unless you all make anything.
Pardon?
Were you just, Mia Swinzer next meeting?
It's at the bottom of your list, or?
It's January twenty-first, sorry.
Anything else, anybody else wants to discuss for why I asked for a motion, to have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just saying you're all.